This is the July 24th, 2019 meeting of the Eastwood Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped and we have a call. Our first item on the agenda is the secretary's report of June 5th. Anyone have any clarifications for the minutes or questions?
The second page with the centennial celebration is live just before the directors' report. You have the centennial celebration committee will meet on May 22nd. And should be just met. Or else you could get the next meeting which is June 12th. Either way, just. Because we met on June 5th.
Right.
This was June 5th. Right. So just change that to 22nd. Just so it's right. It'll help you.
Okay, so the only clarification would be to change that to met instead of will meet on May 22nd. We need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Next is the financial report. We have two financial reports to look at today. The first one is the close of FY '19. As you know FY '19 ended on June 30th. And end of year number, we were 99.8% spent out in total. We turned back just under $500 to the town. So we worked really hard to stay within budget this year and we're good. Unless you have any questions specifically for me. I think we had been pretty much up to date with what was happening within the salary lines and operating was going to cover that over time. Good job. Thanks. It's not easy. I have a new girlfriend. I'm not gonna tell you what that is, but until here. Alright, anybody have any questions on the FY '19 expense budget? Okay, good. So then the other sheet. Oh, yeah, I should have proved that first. Yeah, sorry. We have a motion to accept this one?
Motion. Second?
All in favor? So then the FY '20 budget. FY '23 and July 1st, so we're only a couple of weeks, a few weeks now into this budget. We're already 11.7% spent out, but as a refresher, we're still, we've already received the sales membership fee for the fiscal year. And that's a big chunk of the budget, or the operating line, that's $13,383. So that's already been paid for, so that sales line is spent out in the year, as well as the tech support line that's also paid to sales. $1600 this year, so that is also spent out. So that puts us at 33% spent out of the operating line so far. We won't see increases like that anymore, sort of level off for the rest of the year. We had a half pay period and a full pay period, jumping back up to salaries. And we have one staff member who's receiving a loan debt payment for this fiscal year based on her anniversary date. So we're right where we need to be for salaries. Though we have the biggest budget the library has ever seen, ever, this fiscal year. It's also the tightest budget we've had so far, particularly in that library technician line. The way it stands right now, I'm gonna have a really difficult time even having any staff meetings this fiscal year. Or bringing in coverage when someone gets sick. Or taking a vacation, we're gonna be tight. We've got maybe about $600 a little room within that line this fiscal year. So we're just gonna hope that no one gets sick. And that our vacation is cool. So we're gonna be. So we're gonna be tight. And that's something I wanna keep in mind when we're working on budget prep for FY '21. But just to give you a heads up on that, salaries for sure are going to be spent out to the penny, at least for the most part right now.
Are you thinking for FY '21?
For FY '21, when we start doing that budget prep, which will be the end of this year, already November. December, we're stuck looking at that. I really think we have to figure out a way to build in a little bit of, to request more than what we need in that line going forward. So that we do have coverage for when people call up and say, so that we can get some, you know, to cover. And so that we can have four quarter staff meetings this year. I think we'll only be able to do two staff meetings, away things. So there's not much we can do about it this year, and I knew that, you know, going all along, I've known that. But in thinking ahead for FY '21, I think we will have to work with town administration and the finance committee on how to get some wiggle.
Tom's waiting for a phone?
Yeah. Just in case. But we're gonna make the best of it for this. And like I said, hopefully no one gets sick.
It means crap.
And then back down in the operating, you know, aside from the sales expenses. We've had one Eversource bill so far, so you can see what that is there. You know, on July 1st, we did have a supplies list of things that were needed that we weren't able to purchase till the new fiscal year. So we placed those orders. So we're starting to chip away over. Any questions about that? We need a motion to accept the FY '20 budget.
I hope we accept the FY '20 budget.
Second?
All in favor? Okay, next we have the building updates. Just some old business things to bring up again. I did wanna just mention, I don't know if you all have noticed, but the building department has been doing an awesome job with our lawn this year. The DPW did a great job for us in the years previous, but this year the building department is in charge of lawn maintenance. And they're coming every other week, I don't need to call, it's just happening, so. And we've gotten, you know, a few compliments from residents as well, that they've noticed how nice everything looks. So really appreciate Jim Merritt's department for taking care of that for us. His department was also responsible for installing the new flagpole, and I just wanted to mention that. It is in my director's report that the flagpole was put in on June 24th. Jim Merritt borrowed a lift truck from the DPW, which was fun to watch them get that up there. And after some adjustments were made, the new flag, which was provided to us by the Beddowens agent on Cormer. The flag got put up on June 27th. Then Jim's department came back and they put in some mulch for us for the new collets. And also put out some flowers, which is what they made them. So it was wonderful to have that in place by 4th of July, as they had promised, so that was great. So thanks to Jim's department again for that. And speaking of Jim, I'm gonna talk about the pergola a little bit with you all today, because we've been talking about the pergola for the past couple of meetings. Unfortunately, I still don't have anything solid to tell you about with that today. Aside from the fact that when Jim was here, working on the flagpole and doing a few other things, he and I, you know, took a good look at the deck, he looked at the specs that Diane had gotten for us. He's really recommending and hoping that you will all agree to go with a custom-made pergola that his department would make. And not building something that's prefab or pre-made. Because where the deck is custom-made, he's just concerned that if the wrong thing gets put in there, or if they cut the deck to the wrong size and then a product shows up that doesn't work, then we're kinda stuck. So he very much wants to do this. He is coming up with a few ideas. I was hoping to have them for today, I don't, but at our next meeting, I'll certainly have all that. Obviously, it's not happening this summer, which, you know, he and I talked about back in June, which isn't a project that could happen this summer. But hopefully in the fall, so that going forward, at least we've got some shade coverage on.
Does he feel that those prices, we got more within the range for him to do this?
Yes, he thinks he could do it for less, at least the top prices. I mean, he thinks he could get it for probably like.
Maybe you add the wood, add wood instead of the vinyl?
Vinyl, right. Where there may be some vinyl pieces to it, but there would be maybe a mixture of vinyl and wood. So he was doing a little bit of research on this.
Well, it's probably not just stationary, when it's not gonna move anyway.
Right, he did say he wouldn't be able to do the louvers, I talked to him about that. And so he said, well, at that point, it might be possible to just get like that sun umbrella product, where it's just sort of like a shade that comes down, and then we roll it back up, you know, when it's not used.
The way the sun goes in the boards, I think they kinda block it.
Anyway, right.
The boards are young, they look wide.
Right.
So it's, unless it's right at noon time.
Right, right. Which, and if it's that hot out, probably he wouldn't be sitting outside anyway, probably, so. But I appreciate that he's, A, willing and B, interested. You know, he's worked so hard on this building anyway, and as we've talked about before, I really do think, rightly so, takes some ownership of our building. Because he and his department worked so hard to remodel it, you know, four years, that project started four years ago already. So I mean, five years ago. So anyway, hopefully it's what we need again, I'll have a more firm idea for all that. But it's progress at least, there is, you know, talking and figuring out what we can do best, so. So those are my updates for buildings. Anyone have anything else I'm gonna talk about? New business. Library computers. Yes, so we're back talking about the computers. A couple of months ago, I spoke with you all about the Windows 10 update that's coming in January of next year. And it would be necessary for us to replace our computers. And then the person I need to coordinate with sales was on vacation, and she came back and then sales put a halt on purchasing new computers. Until mid-August, it looks like. So what I'm proposing today, we have 10 computers that are running on Windows 7. So those 10 computers we know need to be taken care of, those five staff computers, five public computers. Five of those computers are newer, and they do qualify for an upgrade to Windows 10. So we wouldn't have to replace those computers, we could just upgrade the software to Windows 10. And that would probably only be about a few hundred dollars between the cost, the licensing cost to do it and then the installation. Based on the numbers we've seen from sales for new computers, we'd be looking at probably about $3,500 for five new computers with, and then plus installation. So when I put that together, and then raising the estimate up a little bit, I'm thinking that for around $5,000 total, we'll be able to replace and/or upgrade all 10 computers to Windows 10 by the end of the calendar year. So what I'm gonna ask you for today, I don't have a firm quote. Normally, I would have a firm quote, and before I came to you to ask for something, but in this case, I don't have a firm quote. However, I don't want the window to open at sales to buy computers. And me then have to call a meeting and have you vote, and then have sales put another halt to ordering until September or October. So what I'm gonna ask is if you consider approving that up to $5,000 can you spend on either upgrading and/or purchasing new computers? And if it's for more than $5,000, I would call up, can I beforehand, we have, you know, we'll be using building fund for this. There's plenty in the release funds and building fund to cover this, so I wouldn't need you to vote to release any funds from the building fund. They're waiting. But I would just need you to approve that as long as it doesn't go over $5,000, I'd be able to do that and then report back to you. That way we have, I just hate to miss the window again. Or have to.
I'll make a motion to approve spending up to $5,000 on new computers.
All in favor? The 2019 summer reading programs. So we're just about a month into the summer reading program. And I just wanted to acknowledge in the meeting that we have approximately 120 kids who are participating weekly. So they're returning to the library on a weekly basis to collect their beads for their chains. The older kids are getting the big beads, the little kids, or the adults who want to make a colorful program like this are getting little, the bigger beads. But we have 120 as the average of kids returning weekly. And then we have an average of 75 teens, adults, and kids in grades 5 through 8 who are participating in the Scratch Wind program, who are returning for tickets every week. So the library is certainly busy, just off of people participating in the program alone. We've had, as of today, just under 600 people who have attended programs here since the program picked off on June 26th. So between the fabulous outdoor music program that Sandra has coordinated this summer, and then all of the kids events. You may have noticed our regular table was missing, our beautiful hardwood table, and we're on this folding table today. We had to move the hardwood table, thanks to Jim's department again, out of the room. Because we had a program with an eight-foot dinosaur in here, and we knew the dinosaur wouldn't fit with the wooden table. So we had to get the wooden table out, so that dinosaur, inflatable dinosaur, could be here. But that was, and you know, an awesome program, we've had a couple of magicians come in. It's just, I think we've had a good selection of programs this year. Been a lot of, we've heard the word vibrant a few times, a lot of thank us for vibrant programming. I think we do have a little bit of something for everyone this year, so. We still have plenty of time to go, so summer certainly isn't anywhere near over yet in my book. But the program itself has about four weeks left. So the Monday programs, the concert series that continues through August 12th. So if you bring your lawn chairs or a blanket, Diane was at the concert this past Monday. It's nice to just, I think, sit out back and listen to some good music. We still have that happening Monday nights through August 12th, 6 o'clock. Come for a little while, or stay the whole time, one's for about an hour and a half. We do have a ton of kids programs still happening this week. We have our fourth annual stuffed animal sleepover happening, with kids wearing stuffed animals to spend the night in the library. So that's happening this week, but that's all on the library's website, acupl.org. You can click the calendar link and see everything that we have going on. And, you know, if you haven't taken part yet, taken part in anything yet, it's not too late to take advantage of some of the great free programming we're offering here this summer. So I'm really pleased with how the summer is going so far, the staff's working, you know, harder than ever to make everything flow smoothly. We have some great team volunteers who have been helping us out, and that's been a big help, so. We're excited to continue, but I wanted to make sure you all knew all the cool things happening here so far this summer. Sounds good? Alright, the ARIS report. So the ARIS report is the first of the two state reports that determine our state certification, as well as the amount of our state data award. So this is the time of year that I work on those. The ARIS is not due until August 16th, but it's a new format this year with new software, so I wanted to make sure I got a head start. I'm about 90% done with it. Because of the new format, some of the questions were different this year, and so I'm waiting on some answers from the state rep as to how I should best, you know, best way for me to respond to the new format. Also, we're waiting for some statistics still from the state in terms of the usage of the databases that the state provides. So as soon as I have that in, I can plug in those numbers, and be ready for him to sign, and that will be sent off. And then the financial report will open in August, and that's due in September, so we're gonna be talking about that at the next meeting. But I did just wanna give you the highlights of the ARIS report, so you can have those for more positive news on the library. You see when I give you the monthly stats, what the increases have been like. But the ARIS report is taking the entire fiscal year, and when you see the numbers, the total numbers, it's pretty awesome. So as of June 30th, for FY '19, the total amount that we circulated in terms of physical items to patrons and downloadable items to patrons, total just under 91,500 items. This little lump, I can't.
Who was that number?
91,000. It's actually 91,489, so right under 91,500 items. So that's including Overdrive, Hoopla, When Patrons Access, Novelus, Look Up Material. That's the new magazine service provided through Overdrive for digital magazines. And then all of our physical material. Four years ago, I believe this number was right around 60,000. So to see this number now of 90,000, it's over 90,000, is pretty incredible, especially for everyone who says, oh, it's a useful idea. I also just highlighted the book circulation, so, and that's not ebooks, this is physical books. So in FY '19, 23,267 adult books were borrowed. And then 2,602 young adult books were borrowed, which is our smallest collection, so there's not so much to choose from. But then, a big number, 34,846 children's books. So when someone tells you that kids don't read, or they're just looking at devices all day long, 34,846 books, someone is reading those books. So for our small library, I think that's a pretty incredible number of books to be borrowed. So it was very exciting working, working on that report. Going back to the grand total of the 91,489 items, just for comparison, last year's total was 62,257. So it's not even four years ago that it was 60,000, that's just last year. And that has to do with the fact that the digital collections are growing, so there is more available for people. And people are becoming sappier about using the digital collections. It's also easier now than it's ever been before to download an ebook. So I think that that certainly is helping the number. We have the automatic renewals in place now since September of last year, so that obviously is adding to the grand total. And the fact that we're open on Fridays is certainly helping, it's only four extra hours a week, but I think that does make a big difference, because we're giving the opportunity to people who couldn't come in before to be able to come in and use the library. Or people who were coming in before and are still coming in, maybe on Monday, but by Friday are realizing they need something for the weekend, so they're stopping in. So that's definitely an increase as possible. The unadult number is 2,652. For a town without a high school, without a steady group of teens coming into the public library, I think that's a pretty solid number of material. The other big increase we've had is our state award, which will come through as part of this. One of the factors of the state award is the total non-resident circulation. So when we're circulating to people who are not resident in Eastwood. So the number in FY '18 for that was 23,428, and that was the most we had ever circulated to non-Eastwood residents. This year, that number is 34,495, so we've had a big increase there as well. And that's, you know, we're practically at the line of, for Bedford, for 02745, so we do have a lot of Bedford residents come in. But we have a lot of, you know, residents from smaller communities too, like for Avon and Lefford, Freetown, who come and use the library on a regular basis, which is great. So that certainly will do nothing but help our state award this year, which we won't know until the end of the calendar year, but it certainly will help that we've had such an increase in our non-resident population. So those are the highlights of the ARIS report.
Very impressive.
Yeah, not so, little things like we have, you know, 15,000 hits on the website in FY '19, which is not just me checking the website. You know, over, just under 3,000 people attending children's programs at the library. Right around 1,200 people attending adult programs. So it's, everything, every year just improves, and it just, I think, shows that people do value this little library of ours.
Shows that it's a lot of hard work for people to want to come to the library.
So anyway, like I said, this will be done, hopefully, I'm, in my mind, I'm thinking it'll be done by August 1st. I wanna make sure I give, you know, time for the state rep to answer me, and then be time to get those members plugged in. But as soon as it's done, I'll be letting Jim know, so she can come over and sign it. Besides, the chair and trustees always sign the ARIS report as well, so we'll review that briefly together, quickly together. And then you'll sign it, I'll sign it, and it'll be off. And then, before you know it, we'll be talking about the financial report. And then that'll be done, and then hopefully we'll get a nice award from the state, which, as you know, we use to cover our materials expenses, once the material line runs out in the town. And we use that to help support these awesome programs that we provide to the community and group. So the state awards are really important. So that's ARIS.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah, it's pretty awesome. Yeah, everyone, everyone just, we've got a dedicated team here, I say that, I can't say that enough. Everyone takes a lot of pride in what they do here, and they work really hard, and they get as excited as I do about Sandy's numbers, so it's fun too. Hi, your director's report. No, I feel like the whole meeting has been a director's report slash announcements. As I mentioned, that concert series continues through August 12th. We've got quite a We've got quite a bit still happening. All events are posted on the library's calendar at acupl.org. We have got an author coming in on August sixth, which is a Tuesday, at six-thirty PM. Her name is Tara Robertson and she's writing a book within the last year, I believe, called The Trial of Lizzy Borden. You know, as everyone knows, that local Lizzy Borden case is, could be like the first major truth crime case, you know, of the United States or at least this area. But Tara Robertson will be here discussing that on Tuesday, August sixth, at six-thirty. There's no sign up for that, it's just for some for serve. The local band Cool Banana Wig will be here for a family concert on Saturday, August tenth, at eleven AM. That will be out on the back lawn, weather permitting. And there's no sign up for that, you can just drop in. But we're really looking forward to seeing them. One of the members is from the famous and missing area, Tojim, of the band. So we're looking forward to having this band here. And we do have our summer reading open house on Tuesday, August thirteenth, beginning at six PM. You can stop in anytime from six to seven-thirty. We'll have a face painter, a balloon artist, ice cream, thanks to the friends of the Acushia Public Library who are working with the Acushia Creamery to provide ice cream for that night. We're hoping that we'll just have a lot of people come out and enjoy a night, an evening at the library. Whether or not you've participated in summer reading, you've come in and maybe you'll participate in summer reading next year after seeing how fun, fun it is.
Is that the one with selectmen of the year?
We're inviting the selectmen to come serve ice cream that night, but we have not gotten a firm commitment. They have been scheduled. They did, oh, they did talk about it?
They talked about it, I didn't catch one that said yes.
Okay, I know that they're hoping to change the time of the meeting that they have scheduled that night so that they will be available to come here. And I'll be sending, working with Jen, sending out a letter to them this week to officially extend the invite to them so that they have the exact date and time. And I will be, you know, like them, like them to see, by coming here. We want them to see this vibrant library firsthand and we'd love their help with scooping ice cream. So yes, we will be extending that to them and hopefully we'll see them. That's, that's about all I've got, unless you saw something in the director's report or anything on the top of it. Any questions, comments? And of course, six of you are all invited to scoop ice cream that night as well. Have a balloon made for yourselves, there are quite some new ones.
He really likes.
One thing I could, I have a hand in it.
Okay.
One thousand books before.
Oh, sure, we can talk about that. So we launched the one thousand books before kindergarten program in the spring. So how that works, anyone who has yet to start kindergarten can participate in this program. So obviously kindergarten is the age really where the kids learn to read on their own. So in this case, one thousand books before kindergarten, we're not expecting the kids to be reading these books. We're expecting these families to be sitting and reading books with their kids. Anyone who reads the books, I think, an older sibling, a grandparent, parents, babysitter, aunt, uncle, the library when you come to storytime, those books count. But we have about fifteen kids who are participating. We've had nine who have reached one hundred books. So the first goal is to read one hundred books and we have nine so far who have reached the one hundred book goal. We have four, actually, as of Monday, we have five who have reached the two hundred book goal. So if my report is incorrect, I said that before Monday. And we have one child who starts kindergarten in August and was very determined to read those thousand books and they did. And so she's already, since April, has completed the goal. So she, today, selected a book with, well, a couple of weeks ago, she told us the book that she would like to have a nameplate put in, so the book is dedicated to her. And the book that she picked, we had a very beloved copy that had been checked out well over a hundred times since it was added to the collection, maybe fifteen years ago. It's a Max and Ruby book by Rosemary Wells. She loves this book. So we were able to purchase a new copy of this book and we designed the nameplate. And when she comes to the stuffed animal sleepover tomorrow night, we're going to have the nameplate in the book for her and we're going to, at the pajama storytime, do a dedication and point out that she reached the goal of a thousand books within just a couple of months.
One child's to complete that.
Yeah, yeah, which we credit the parents, obviously, for is because the parents are diligently writing down these book titles and some of them are also keeping track of the authors and-
It's nice for them to have too, I think, you know, you think about that. You know, twenty years ago, that's a fun thing to look back on.
The must, must have been a library.
No, she, she's just a-
My sister-in-law is a librarian, it matters what she would do.
She is a devoted library user and reader and has been bringing her kids. She's got four children and she's brought them all to the library. And, and this is her third child. So she's got a younger child who is also participating in the program, but he's only reached two hundred so far. They're taking it a little bit slower with him, only two hundred. He's not even three years old yet, so they've got plenty of time to go. But we're seeing that with all the, of the nine who have reached the hundred. It's, I have to make sure I definitely point out to the parents when they come in with those papers that that's a testament to the parents, really, who are keeping track of this and who are taking the time to write the titles down. We don't keep the log, we look at it and we, you know, if I recognize a title, I'll say, oh, do you remember that one? Did you like that book? But we're not keeping it or, you know, making them tell us what the books were about. It's really for fun, but it's a lot of work to write that all down. But they're doing it, which, you know, I know nine isn't a huge number, but it's actually more than I thought would be doing it. You know, we only launched the program in April and it was just a quiet thing at first. Now more people are learning about it. But if you go into our children's room on the emergency door, we have stars with the kids' names on them and the, what they learned that star for, whether it be a hundred or two hundred books. Or with Kaylee, she's got ten stars for her thousand books. So it's a pretty neat program and it was just something where we hope will just last continuously. And when they reach the, they get a sticker for every hundred books. When they reach five hundred, they get a book to keep. And then when they reach the thousand books, they get the nameplate with the book dedicated to them, which is not something we normally do here, so it is something that's pretty special. So forever her name will be in there, you know, for people to look at and hopefully be inspired to do the program also. Just a fun thing to do. That was a big answer for a short question.
Very interesting.
Thank you.
Congratulate that Emily.
Yeah, I will, I'll make sure I let her know. And I'll have them wash the meeting. Good job, Kaylee. Do we want to set the date for the next meeting? Sounds good. I picked out two Wednesdays in August, once summer reading is over-ish. I have August twenty-first or August twenty-eighth at four-thirty, if either of those dates work.
We go on this one, the twenty-first, the twenty-fifth, is the twenty-first one for-
Twenty-first is the-
Karen will be here.
Is the twenty-eighth better?
I'm here for twenty-eighth.
We can do the twenty, if that works, does that work for everybody?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
August twenty-eighth for the next meeting?
School already started.
School of, yes.
School started on Tuesday, yes.
Yikes.
School has started.
But I'll be on vacation by fall.
No.
All right, is that it? Does anybody have anything else? All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this July twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen meeting of the Acushia Public Library Board of Trustees will officially adjourn. It is five oh nine.